All righty, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular board meeting of eighteen December twenty twenty four. Welcome to those that are here, a big crowd. Been a while, and those that may be watching online or watching the tape later. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite Pastor Trace Farley up to provide the invocation and lead us in the pledge. Thanks.
We are so excited to come to you this time to do the business that you have ordained for this county and for these people, but also, Lord, to say thank you. Lord, we have a lot of expectations at this time of year, and we go to a lot of expense and spend a lot of energy. Lord, help us this year to remember why we do all these things. Help us to remember the core truth, that it is the birth of your Son, Jesus Christ, that we celebrate. Lord, as he came to bring peace on earth, I ask you to give us peace in our meetings today. I pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. All righty, it is nine oh three. Emily, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thayer.
Here.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Here.
All righty, we have a quorum. First item of business we have is approval of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Meeting agenda?
Whoops, I jumped on the wrong one. Mr. Chairman, I rescind what I just said and said I'd like to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have an agenda. First item of business, the consent agenda. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. The consent items are adopted. Elected official department head staff reports. Do we have anything from elected officials? Nope. Nothing from staff. All righty. We must be close to the holidays. All right, I'll open now for citizen public comment. This is an opportunity for folks in the room to comment on items that aren't on the agenda. Just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Provide your name and address for the record, and then if there are issues that are brought up or questions we can answer, we'll do so at the end of public comment. Otherwise, we may direct items to staff or take them up at a later meeting. So with that, is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Mr. Wilcox.
How are you guys?
Good.
Danny Wilcox, fifty-three, seventy-two, Timber Riz Drive, St. Elizabeth. Thank you. Thank you, too, for your service. Really. Memories, I do remember what you ran on and how you brought this county back to financial stability. And I remember how you, the struggles you went through, and through COVID, bringing it through with some sort of liberty we had in this county. So for all your service, I really want to publicly thank you for your time, and I wish you both the best. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? All righty, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And thank you very much, former commissioner, current planning commissioner, and great citizen. Danny, thank you. All righty, moving on. We have no discussion items today. We'll move on to action items. This is really the purpose of today's meeting. First we have is the approval of the Albert County budget resolution, which includes appropriations for next year. That will be done in public hearing, so I would accept a motion to open public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open a public hearing to review Albert County twenty twenty five budget resolution.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to open public hearing on the twenty twenty five budget resolution for appropriating of funds. Tiffany, did you want to take us through this?
Morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Hermes, Finance Director. We are appropriating the twenty twenty five budget. Do you want me to go ahead and read through each of the funds?
Yeah.
The general fund, we are appropriating twenty-two million, four hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and one. Public Health and Administration, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and nineteen. Road and Bridge, thirteen million, nine hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and sixteen. Sales and Use Tax Fund, eleven million, eight hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one. Law Enforcement Assistant Fund, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight. Department of Human Services Fund, five million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three. We are no longer going to be using the grant fund in twenty twenty five, so that is at zero. Retirement Fund, eight hundred and four thousand. Capital Improvement Fund, one hundred thousand. Growth and Development Fund, two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Conservation Trust Fund, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight. Bond Redemption Fund, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve. Sun Country Meadows Debt Service Fund, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and six, for a total of fifty-seven million, forty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-six.
Thank you. Saved us some reading. Do we have any discussion up here? I have, no. Just wanted to confirm. I know we've talked about this in several of the other meetings, but a lot of the numbers look a lot larger than they have in past years. But that is because we're now capturing lease payments and value of leases.
Correct. We used to just budget the lease payment, but now we're also budgeting the capital proceeds, or the lease proceeds and the capital purchase. So it's both the wash on the revenue and the expenditure side.
All righty, thanks. I guess with that, I'd open for public comment if there is any. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And again, if there's any final discussion or comment, we'll take that.
Just as a general comment, tell us what you think of the budget. It's balanced pretty close.
Correct. The only items that we are using general fund fund balance for is the million to taxpayer relief, and then we have the capital or one-time purchases.
Now, this is the culmination of a lot of work for your department in particular, but everybody across the county, working together and putting together a budget, which is always fun to watch. One time, we, everybody gets together on the same page and really plows forward. And so thank you to your department, but for everybody as well, putting all the effort in to make this budget work.
So, does it feel fun while you're being watched, or?
No.
No. Okay, no, I appreciate it. Again, last few years have worked really hard to get as close as we can to, you know, we've traditionally kind of budgeted very conservatively, underestimated revenue over estimated expenses. It's helped us get to some healthy fund balances, but I think getting ever closer and making sure that all the departments know that, you know, this is a plan, it's based on estimates, nobody's going to get shot if they go a few dollars over. That's why we have fund balances, but it's better than much better to use numbers that are as realistic as possible. So anyway, I do appreciate all the effort. I guess with that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Albert County twenty twenty five budget resolution as presented.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve the Albert County twenty twenty five budget resolution and appropriate funds as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All righty, so associated with that, now that we have passed a budget, we have to certify mills to actually bring money into the budget. So I guess I would accept a motion, and then we'll do some discussion. First would be the resolution for the county's mill levies, and then we'll do a separate motion for the Sun Country.
Public hearings on both.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
And close them.
We can close, yeah. So let's close the public hearing on the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing on Albert County twenty twenty five budget hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to close the public hearing on the twenty twenty five budget and appropriations. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. So that is complete. Now we're back to where I was. So to a motion to adopt the resolution certifying the county's mill levies.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to open a public hearing for certification of the twenty twenty five Albert County Mill Levis.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mill levies to support the budget that we just passed. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. And again, as it was mentioned, this year again has a temporary mill reduction this time, leaving a million dollars that could have been collected in property taxes in the hands of our citizens, and hopefully that will continue going forward. All righty, and then the next we have is a resolution separately. Oh, that was just opening. So we'll ask if there's any public comment on this. I'm way ahead of myself. Okay, seeing none, we'll close, and I'll accept a motion to approve the
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the certification, the twenty twenty five Albert County Mill Levis as presented.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve the Albert County Mill Levis for twenty twenty five as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Close public hearing on this item?
Mr. Chair, I move we close the public hearing on certification, the twenty twenty five Albert County Mill Levis.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing on the Albert County Mill Levis. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. That hearing is closed. Now, let's see if on this last one I can do it right. This time, we'll open as the Board of the Sun Country Meadows Public Improvement District for the purpose of certifying their mill levies. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, as the Board for the Sun Country Meadows Public Improvement District, I move we open a public hearing for the resolution certifying the twenty twenty five mills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open public hearing for the Sun Country Meadows Public Improvement District Mills for twenty twenty five. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. This sets the mill at ten point eight-two-seven mills, which is down from, I believe it was well over sixteen when we started years ago. So I would accept a motion to adopt the mills for Sun Country Meadows.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the resolution certifying the twenty twenty five mill levy for Sun Country Meadows Public Improvement District.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And for those that are in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. I'd accept a motion to close public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing on the resolution certifying the twenty twenty five mill levy for Sun Country Meadows Public Improvement District and close this meeting as the Board for that entity.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the Sun Country Mills and closes the Sun Country Mill, or Sun Country Meadows PID Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. So moving on to board planning. Our next meeting is Monday morning, and that is just to look at some appropriations, supplemental appropriations for the twenty twenty four budget, just in preparation to move into audit in the coming years. And the auditors were in this week, starting their discussions with folks and kind of doing the pre-work. So we'll get that bit of cleanup done Monday, and then we've got a couple of other items we're trying to get updated before the end of the year, public work standards, et cetera, before January first. So do you have anything else that you'd like to add to Monday's meeting? Nope. Okay, so with that, we do have a couple of land use items this afternoon. One is a S U R for a business called Christmas in the Sticks, and some small regulation updates. That'll be held here at one P M. in this room, but that's all the business we have.
Chair, as a point of privilege, I'd like to make a few comments.
Sure.
I may or may not responsible for some of the people in the room today. So we want to take a moment to recognize the service of these two gentlemen for the past eight years as our county commissioners today. We realize that they are still commissioners until January, but we know things get busy and things happen. And so we want to take this opportunity to recognize them and thank them. I had the unique opportunity to have a front row seat to the entire eight years that these two gentlemen have been here. Six years over at that table, two years here. And the amount of change and positive change that they have brought to the county in the eight years they are here has been remarkable. We had a budget that was beyond tight when they first came in. No excess funds. Every dollar was pinched as far as it could, and it created issues for us downstream because we couldn't do maintenance like we needed to do. A lot of issues that came up because we just didn't have the funds. Thanks to their leadership, and of course, turn around the economy as well, but being able to have wise and sound financial decisions being made at this table has made a big difference in the county. And so I appreciate that very much from these two gentlemen. For those of you who are around there, you also know that we were a little lacking in decorum. We had chaos at our meetings, dysfunction to a certain extent. And I know that was one of the top priorities for these two gentlemen coming in, was to bring that decorum back, to have peace, to have order in the meetings. And they have done that, and it's something that we'll continue to do because it makes things run so much more smoothly when that happens. And another thing that they've shown through their leadership, and Chris will get a kick out of this, is I've actually come around to where I agree with policy and having policies in place. I chomped at the bit. I futzed and fought a little bit with them about policies as they came around, but I've come to understand that how important that is and how it puts all of our departments on equal footing with the same ideas, same goals going forward, and how important that is. And so that's just one of the few things that I have learned from these two gentlemen over the past eight years, looking at what they've done, even to the point, a few times I had to come in and complain about some things I didn't agree with. They listened, and they were not dismissive, and didn't mean I always got my way, but they had that open door, and they were willing to listen to me, and I always appreciated that. The last two years have been a pleasure to work with these guys, and to get to know them on a different level has been a pleasure, and to know that, you know, now they're not just coworkers but friends is a great testament to the way that this board has evolved to where we do work together, no matter what. So we have a little bit of token here of our appreciation. Come over here. We really should have a lapel mic. So Commissioner Thayer, Albert County presents to Grant Thayer recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service on the Albert County Board of County Commissioners, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty five.
Thank you very much.
And likewise, Albert County presents to Christopher Richardson in recognition and appreciation of your dedicated service on the Albert County Board of County Commissioners, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty five. And if you all would like to make a few comments, you certainly can, but I believe there's also some people in the room that would like to make some comments before we move on.
Mr. Peterson, welcome.
Tom Peterson, thirteen, sixty-six, Conifer Trail, and I rise today to show appreciation to you two gentlemen, Grant Thayer and Chris Richardson, for your dedicated service. And I think we go through that real quickly, dedicated service. Elected officials of all stripes work very hard, and both of you in your eight years of service have been recognized for your hard work on behalf of the citizens of Albert County. I thank you for that. I also thank you for your commitment to Albert County. Albert County first is, I think, a mantra, or at least a backdrop of how both of you have operated, and I think it's been evident in the accomplishments that you've had. And I also want to recognize you for your accomplishments, and there have been many. I think as citizens, we expect finances to be managed well. We expect professional services and professional staff, professional organization, and governance, and policies that reflect the culture of the community. And you two gentlemen have done just that in your eight years. And personally, for me, on the top of my list would be the financial standing right now of the county. The second one was, and it's ancient history now, but as Danny said, the COVID response and maintaining our liberties here in Albert County. And then I think the third is just the response to the flood, and how you worked hard and recognized the impact that that had on Albert County and the citizens. So I thank you for all of that. Thank you for your dedicated commitment, service to Albert County, and I wish you both all the very, very best. And Grant, as you enjoy your family and your land, all the best. Thank you for all that you've done. And Chris, as you move on to the State House, I think your leadership in CCI and leadership beyond the county is reflected in the vote total that you received in House District Fifty-Six, the highest vote total of any state representative in the state of Colorado. And I think you'll serve us and the six other counties very well, very well. So with that, I just want to thank you and show my appreciation. Thank you.
Rick Pettit, two twenty-seven Cheyenne. I just want to thank you guys for the work you've done. I know the four years that I spent as Commissioner with you guys, and four years before that as Treasurer. It sure made a big difference. When I took over as Treasurer in two thousand, twenty-eleven, I guess it was, the ending balance for the general fund was sixty-four thousand dollars. We weren't paying our bills, and since then, we've made a lot of progress towards building up reserves and budgeting so that we knew what we were spending and what was coming in, so there weren't any big surprises like we've had in the past. And there were several years when the board was in chaos before you guys took over, and it sure has made a big difference having a board that could work together. I know at times we didn't all agree with how things were going, but we could always come to an agreement to move forward. And so that's made a big difference for this county because we don't need the chaos that we've had in the past.
Sherri Hewlett, seven oh three Arapahoe Avenue, and you're current Albert County Treasurer and Public Trustee. Again, I just want to echo what most of the folks have said here today, that I, for one, was here during that economic downturn, and I seen a lot of good employees come and go. I worked in the Treasurer's office, seeing how the numbers were really low. So I, for one, appreciate all of your hard work to get our finances back, so that when I became the Treasurer, we were good. And the commissioners before you that you worked with, kudos to all of you. I appreciate it. I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate the fact that when I came in as an elected official, you were welcoming, always willing to help. It's definitely a different transition from when you work in the office and you become the elected official. You have new duties, and I, for one, appreciate your openness and willing to talk to us at any given moment in time. So I, too, wish you nothing but good luck and the best. And Grant, as you retire, and again, enjoy your family. And Chris, as you move on to the big house in the state, I know that we have a good representative up there. So that makes a big difference. So thank you very much.
Well, I don't have anything prepared, but this is Monty Hankins, Albert County Public Works Director. I've been at the county now fifteen years. I've been through a few sets of commissioners, and I must say, this has been the best board that I've been privileged to work under. Prior to moving into the director's spot, you know, I wasn't too connected on the operations and the things, the tasks that you guys performed, the decisions you guys made. I was aware, but not really super connected. Since being in the director's spot, I have a whole new light and very much appreciate everything you guys have done. For my department in particular, we have come leaps and bounds with you guys at the helm, you know, from where we were. We had equipment that was failing, equipment that wasn't really the safest for the employees to operate, and that has dramatically changed, made us much more efficient. The biggest thing, in my opinion, is the new facility we are in. We went from a building that part of it was built in nineteen thirty-eight to the structure that you see on the east side of Kiowa that we're in now. And that building alone, just we've been in it a year coming up, well, actually, what's today, the eighteenth? Yeah, today, the eighteenth. And in the last year, that building has made us so much more efficient in day-to-day operations, in emergency operations. So and if it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't be in that structure. So I want to say thank you so much. Road and Bridge, even the personnel. In two thousand and eight, they cut Road and Bridge down from fifty-two employees down to about thirty-eight. We kind of ran ran on that for many, many years, right at that number. You know, it was similar to the budget where we were just getting by and we would rob from Peter to pay Paul. I used to, my famous saying used to be, Roden Bridge is experts at making things work with toothpicks and duct tape, you know. But things have changed there. Now we are back up to right around 55 employees, where we, similar to where we were in 2008 before the economy downturned. So, and a lot of that has to do with, you know, you guys and, and budget and things of that nature. The Roden Bridge budget is very healthy and, and improving, and that has been noticed on the quality of the roads and the things we're doing with asphalt and things of that nature. So I just want to say thank you guys very much. I know there have been people, since you've been in place, that have come before me. I'm sure if they could stand here, they would say the same thing. But on behalf of Roden Bridge, I thank you so much. Very much appreciate it.
Rhonda Braun, Albert County Clerk and Recorder. I just want to thank you guys. I was also here for the chaos, and that is not what we have today. And that was a big goal of yours, and I appreciate it. And over the last couple of years, I thank you for your support, for me personally, and for, like Dallas said, for listening. If I came to you with something, it was always considered and listened to. And if I didn't agree with something, I could come to you and say, is there more information that I don't know? And a lot of times, there was. I'm super amazed at how well we are represented in so many different areas, not just as in this room, but all of the boards and all of the places that you guys go to represent us. That is just, you are well-respected in the state, and we just appreciate you so much. And Chris, I thank you for going on and, and serving some more. So we appreciate you and thank you so much for your service.
Susan Murphy, County Assessor. I don't have a Hallmark card ready for you, but I do want to say thank you for your service and everything that you've done for the Assessor's Office. We have come a long way. When I started in 2012 in the Assessor's Office, we had four employees, one Assessor. We have nine, well, we have eight employees and a working Assessor. We have heat. I had to throw that in there. Really love the heat. Appreciate your conservative values and staying true to being conservative and upholding the values that Albert County citizens hold very dear to their hearts. All the resolutions that you've done, COVID, all of the hard legislation that's passed up at the state, and just say, hey, you know, Albert County doesn't agree with that, and we're not rolling that, that way. So I appreciate all of your hard work and dedication. You have brought us together as a community and as the board and elected officials. These are not easy positions. I just appreciate everything you've done legislatively. I mean, coming off a winter conference, there's so much behind the scenes that happens in legislation that we don't even hear about. And you guys are fighting things that aren't even, you know, on the table yet. So that's going to be a tough job, Chris. So thank you so much for all of that and going on and fighting that good fight. God bless you. My staff thanks you. I thank you. Compensation studies were done, balanced budget, looking at everything with a conservative approach. It's the main thing for me, and appreciate all that you've done for us. So thank you.
I don't know what to say. I didn't come prepared for this. In fact, as I spent 14 years on the planning commission, two years in the library board, now eight years here. So I have contributed something or irritated some people as it relates to Albert County ongoing government. Be that as it may, when Chris and I were first sworn in, and several of you have mentioned this, for about the first six months, almost every phone call I got was from suppliers in the county that hadn't been paid. So I'll never forget, and this is a true story, I went to the then-county manager and I said, show me your budget. And he said, well, why do you care? I says, well, we got to have cash in, cash out, and how that's balanced. He says, well, I spend the money when I want to and I'll pay for it when I can. In the industry I come up through, through corporate things, if you didn't have a well-thought-out budget with a good financial plan, you were unemployed. And one of the things is I think, and I've got to credit Danny Wilcox, Rick Pettit, Dallas and Chris, is we've worked together. And one of the things that I want to, and I'm having trouble with my voice because I, this is making me feel so, I don't know how. Be that as it may, get back to it, Grant, is that one of the things that has been so important to me is each and every one of us that has, during my eight years, that has served as a county commissioner has a very different background. And each and every time we'd have an issue, a crisis, whatever you want to talk about, come up, we would all sit down. And it was amazing to me how many different road paths people took to coming to a workable, mutually acceptable solution. And all three of us, and Rick and Danny, we all worked together to find a workable solution. And the other thing is, is when I first got sworn in, we did some staffing reviews. The county was understaffed. The staff was underpaid. And today, we're pretty close to being full. We've got some open positions that we're recruiting for, yes. And since Chris and I got here, including benefits and salaries, we've doubled them. And so I, I'm, I think that the staff environment here in Albert County today is so much better than it was then. Now, to be fair, when we got sworn in, we come into better economic times than we're there previously. But if you don't manage better economic times, you go bankrupt. And we are not. We, in fact, is the budget that was presented earlier, it shows that we are in good financial shape, and it's going to provide what I call a very favorable environment for the two new commissioners that are going to replace Chris and me. And in the end, I've only got one sentence. Thank you.
Well, obviously, the chair doesn't get to control what happens in meetings. If I was off my game a little this morning, it was because I was kind of wondering what I was missing. That, why were all these people here? We've had so many meetings over this budget and no controversy, and suddenly everybody's here. So it was the farthest thing from my mind, because even though I've been kind of slowly packing out my office, it does not feel like it's time to go yet. But I very much appreciate this. It's kind of funny, the plaque presented to Christopher Richard, the only person that calls me Christopher is my wife, and that's usually accompanied by an eye roll. So I will remain Chris, but thank you so much. As many people said, we did come in to more than a little bit of turmoil here in the, in the county. And kind of our first order of business is after the, after the primary, and I know there was a resignation, and Danny Wilcox was appointed to fill a vacancy. We met every Friday at Men Coz and Dino's for breakfast with, with Danny, just so he could, I guess, just dump everything that had come into his lap in the previous four days. And just to say, hey, we, we support you. We know that things are not ideal, and, and anything we could do on the way in. We started those talks. And then after the November election, Grant, Danny and I, and the county manager at the time, Ed Eman, would meet in the county manager's office on Tuesdays for about two or three hours a week, just kind of walking through his assessment of everything in the county, where we were at, what we needed to do, what we were seeing, and had kind of put together one of the whiteboards in there, about 10 or 12 things we wanted to get done. I know Grant, coming from the business world, you just say, do it, or find another job, and we'll find another person. Not quite the same in government, but it took us about 18 months to work through those, those 10 items. But during that time, just really saw the, the power and the dedication of the folks here in the county. On the side of the table, we, we set policy, and I know Dallas now grudgingly agrees that's okay. He's even proposed a few that we use now. But, you know, we appropriate funds, we set policy and, and broad goals for the county. And then everybody on the other side of the table's left to carry those out. And I know the elected officials have all worked well together over the years. They have their separate authorities, the things they do, but really wanted to focus on, on the employees. I mean, the guys and the road graders, the guys that are moving dirt, fixing asphalt, you know, our deputies on the road, the, the folks that work in the administrative offices of various types that are taking phone calls all the time, working for our citizens, are what has made this job really, again, great value, but a lot easier, I think, for us. Because every tough decision we have to make translates into just tremendous work and, and good deeds for our citizens. I mean, we've looked at this county as a public service organization, and that's what it is. I have enjoyed every, well, no, I haven't enjoyed every minute, but give me a few years and looking back, I'll be able to say I enjoyed every minute because we'll forget the, some of the bad times. But COVID, I think, was a chance to demonstrate what government is supposed to be. You do the things that people can't do on their own, and, and you protect their liberties. And that, that's the basics of it. We're here to protect freedoms and allow people to do what they want to do, to achieve what they want to achieve, and kind of stay out of their way and just do the things that they absolutely can't do themselves. You know, protecting those in need, that's the entire mission statement of our, our Human Services Department back there. We have some vulnerable people in the, the county, and they take care of them. They don't overstep. They come alongside and they help. And that's really what we try to do. As, like, Grant wasn't prepared for this. Still not really, doesn't seem possible that on the, the 8th, I'll be gone. We'll have new commissioners coming in about a week later for Grant, and, and Grant will be departing shortly after I do. But I'm certainly not, looking at the new position is bigger and better. It's just going to be different and, and more of an opportunity to, to serve. And I do appreciate that. Having spent most of my adult life in the military and moving every couple of years, to have spent eight years doing one thing is kind of foreign to me. But it's been an opportunity to really build great friendships with folks and to do things and see what the results are. Like I said, for most of my life, you, you did your best and then you moved, moved on to another part of the, the country or the world and hoped things worked out, or that the new guy didn't break everything or change everything. But that's their, their prerogative as well. So anyway, I, I thank you all for this. We have another short meeting on Monday. Please don't come back. No. I treasure every, every one of you that's in this room and, and the folks that couldn't be here today. So thank you very much. Have a Merry Christmas, and God bless you all. Thanks.
Alrighty. It is 9:45, and we're in recess, and Emily has longer minutes than she had planned.